Good afternoon, welcome to the 4:00 PM City Council Work Session for February 25th. And we'll start with number one, which is consideration of a resolution to proceed with conversion of Main Street and Church Streets to two-way traffic as recommended in the Downtown 2040 Master Plan, and Mr. Martin will be presenting to us.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. The purpose of the presentation this evening is to review the staff recommendation for the implementation of two-way traffic on both Main and Church Streets. The outline for this evening is a timeline of how we've gotten to this point, the benefits of implementing, a little discussion about loading zones, why we need to proceed now, or why we should proceed now, recommendation and metrics of success, and then have some discussion with City Council. In the mid-1950s, the population and the retail started moving away from the downtown. As we know, and we've heard before, the first major push of retail away from the downtown was the Plaza when it opened in 1960. Our transportation projects followed that push away from downtown, and they focused more on moving traffic through, around, and away from the downtown. In 1954, Council voted on four to three to change the direction of Main Street and Church Streets to its present one-way configuration, and this was done under the premise of combating automobile congestion. It led to the eroding of the pedestrian environment, and it helped and led to the decentralization of the city, particularly the downtown. It did follow a nationwide trend that favored the automobile and the suburban shopping experience. This attempt to recreate the suburban shopping experience downtown led to the covering of our historic architecture with modern-looking facades, and also the demolition of buildings to construct parking lots. In the late 90s, there was a proposal to demolish an entire block of buildings between 7th and Commerce Streets to make way for parking lots. This led to the creation of the Downtown and Riverfront Master Plan 2000. Following and implementing this plan led to the success of our downtown that we're seeing today. We now know that these buildings could be and are much more than parking lots with successful retail, loft apartments, and a very successful event center. While preparing the 2000 Master Plan, two-way traffic was requested by retail merchants in order to slow traffic and double their exposure. It was requested that stop signs in lieu of traffic signals, and that plan stated that future decisions on the two-way conversion would be made by city staff in conjunction with business owners.
I just had a bit of a flashback. Was that when there's discussion about having a pedestrian mall in downtown Lynchburg? Was that in 2001? Do you recall that?
I recall some conversations about it, but never that got any real traction.
Okay. I didn't know if that was a linked conversation. All right, thanks.
Yep. So if we look at our timeline since the 2000 Master Plan, in 2004, Council reviewed a traffic study on two-way. In July of that year, they directed further funds to study two-way traffic. In 2005, the two-way traffic study indicated that the conversion can work in August of that year. 2006, Downtown Merchant supported two-way traffic to City Council. There was a Physical Development Committee meeting in 2014 on the implementation improvements of two-way traffic. 2015, PDC meetings, public meetings, another traffic study on the intersection of Rivermont, public meetings on utility and streetscape. Loading Zones research began in 2016, on and on briefing studies on two-way traffic, all of which indicated that it does and would work. In 2017, an implementation plan draft for two-way conversion was done in January of that year. An invitation to bid to do it was put out in February. Conversion outreach to businesses began also in February of that year, and outreach to delivery companies started in March. On March 28th of that year, Council voted against two-way conversion. What happened is a group of opposition businesses came to Council and said, "We do not want two-way traffic," and at that time, Council voted against doing the conversion. Less than two weeks later, a group of supporters came to Council and said, "We support two-way, and we didn't have a chance to talk to you about it." So it kind of puts you in an awkward position. In May of that year, I'm sorry, in April 25th, so about two weeks later, Council deferred further action on two-way pending the outcome of a downtown master plan update. A lot of the things that were recommended in that plan had been fulfilled, and it was time to move downtown forward with an update to that plan. We prepared that plan. The plan was prepared with significant input. There was a kickoff session, if you remember, with Melody Wardnick that came. There were surveys, there were focus group meetings, there were design forums, there were public hearings, everything to staff standing out on the street corners to get input from residents. The plan preparation and outreach was described as epic, because something like that had never been done before in plan preparation in the city of Lynchburg. The adopted Downtown 2040 Master Plan specifically, the adopted plan specifically recommends the conversion of Main and Church Streets to a two-way configuration. The plan lists specific reasons for doing so, and the purpose of our work session this evening is really not to debate the merits anymore, because we think we've done that numerous times, but just to go through some of them. One-way streets really increase the creation of this throughway rather than creating a downtown destination. One-way streets create unnecessary turning movements, increasing the traffic volumes, there's extra travel routes. Multiple lanes on one-way streets enable and encourage aggressive motorists to speed, and one-way streets encourage tunnel vision where they see little around them and they're unlikely to stop at businesses, again focusing on moving traffic through the downtown. Two-lane, one-way streets with stop signs create undesirable crossing environments for the pedestrians during construction that we know is going to be ongoing for some time. It makes it more difficult to detour. Two-way streets promote transit use, and they're better for the economy in that it provides each and every business an equal ability for its frontage to be seen by passing traffic. And you've seen this graphic before about the multiple-threat pedestrian conflicts on two-lane, one-way streets. We've talked about the speeding, and we've talked about how two-way is better for the economy and businesses. The plan also referenced many success stories, specifically in the plan Chattanooga, Tennessee, with their conversion, Pensacola, Florida, and other success stories such as Louisville, Kentucky have been shared with Council previously. So the Downtown 2040 Master Plan and its recommendation for the implementation of two-way traffic on Main and Church Street is supported by citizens, is supported by business owners, it was supported by the previous document, past and present city traffic engineers, several outside engineering studies. The Lynchburg Police Department supported it, the Fire Department supported it, and the Downtown Lynchburg Association all supported the plan and the conversion. The plan adopted on November 13th, 2018. The resolution read, "The Downtown 2040 Master Plan recommends the implementation of two-way traffic on Church and Main Street as a means to improve walkability, slow traffic, promote economic development, and improve circulation and promote downtown as a destination to go to and not through. Whereas, the implementation of two-way traffic on Church and Main Street shall occur after the effective designation, use, and enforcement of timed and permanent loading zones for deliveries." So as noted in the plan and in the resolution, really the reluctance to convert to two-way really centered around loading zones, and there was the reluctance of a few business owners concerning delivery trucks being able to stop and block a lane of traffic. Even though there was a loading zone directly across the curb, they felt it necessary just to stop and block a lane of traffic. The plan specifically recommended adequate provisions for loading zones, time restrictions on loading zones so that some of them could convert back to parking and adequate enforcement. So the plan knew what needed to be done, and moving forward with that, we went into this whole loading zone research, and here's a list of things that we've done on loading zones. You can see the two really important dates here, May 14th of last year. You adopted amendments to the loading zone ordinance. If you remember, prior to the adoption of that ordinance, there was nothing that we could do about trucks blocking the lane on one-way streets. We went through with the pilot program. The program ended, there was about a six-month period or thereabouts. The renewal project began in September, and in October 22nd of that year, city staff reported to Council the success of the loading zone pilot program, and City Council decided to leave the loading zone ordinance in place. So it put a lot of these things in motion. We, as staff, believe that the loading zone pilot program, and even now with construction, that we have shown and fulfilled the part of the resolution that said the effective designation and use of loading zones. So loading zones worked well during the pilot project. You heard a presentation on that. They've also been working extremely well during construction. Even with no parking and no loading zones on the majority of Main Street, businesses are getting their deliveries. We have shown that loading zones, when managed by the Parking Management Department, can and do work. So why now? We've had 20 years of discussion. There's been multiple plans and studies that have indicated the benefits of the two-way conversion. The loading zones have been proven to work. It's time for downtown to move forward. Main Street construction is ahead of schedule. Originally, it was scheduled to be finished in November of 2021. We're four months ahead, and it's now scheduled to be July 4th. Correct. July 4th of 2021, so four months ahead. There's a lead time needed in ordering signals and masked arms of 10 months, so we need a decision in order to be able to move forward. On February 11th of this year, 2020, the Physical Development Committee supported forwarding the staff recommendation of implementing two-way traffic with the conversion of Main and Church Streets as recommended by the Downtown 2040 Master Plan to the full Council, with a set of metrics to gauge its successful implementation. Those metrics were increased assessed value of property along Main and Church Streets, increased storefront occupancy along Main and Church Streets, loading zone compliance, increased traffic volumes, and decreased traffic crashes on the newly implemented conversions. You know, I came to work here December 17th, 1993, and back in that time, downtown was a much different place, much different. We could only have dreamed about what it's become. There was a slow movement to revitalize our downtown, but the full momentum did not start until the Downtown Riverfront Master Plan of 2000 was adopted and implemented by Council. October 10th of 2019 is a date that probably doesn't register with many people. It wasn't a Physical Development Committee meeting, it wasn't a Council meeting, it wasn't a Planning Commission meeting. It was a fall Thursday morning that Marjette Upsher, not yet, Alicia Metter and myself went to the intersection of Bedford Avenue and Hollins Mill Road, and we were going to meet with a gentleman named Robert Benton. Mr. Benton is Executive Vice President of Network Optimization, and his focus is designing and executing capital projects that support the portfolio optimizations of Flowers Food in Thomasville, Georgia. Flowers Bakery has operated in Lynchburg for 40 years, and our job that morning was to convince Mr. Benton to expand and stay in the city of Lynchburg. That was our job that morning. And what Mr. Benton told us that morning resonated with me, and it should resonate with you. He said, and I quote, "I came to Lynchburg fully intending to shut this plant down." Let me repeat that. "I came to Lynchburg fully intending to shut this plant down. But then I saw your downtown, and I decided to take a second look, because Lynchburg has something special, and it is reinventing itself." The rest that morning for staff was easy. All we had to talk about was how we get you through the review process, those things. The end result was a $25 million investment, 15 new jobs, and more importantly, the saving of 159 jobs in Lynchburg, because he saw what we are doing in downtown Lynchburg. That's just one example of companies choosing Lynchburg because of the downtown. Downtown is successful today because in 2001, Council made a decision to adopt and more importantly, follow a master plan, despite people saying, "Do not invest in your downtown, just let it die." In 2003, the total taxable market value of downtown properties was a little over $75 million, and in 2019, it was over $229 million, which is a 205% change. Not only did downtown not die, it is the cultural hub, it's an economic engine for the city, downtown is the heart of the region, and the implementation of the Downtown 2040 Plan will just further make the heartbeat grow stronger. Mr. Benton validated the difficult decisions that Council has and will continue to make. We are recommending that you implement two-way traffic on Church and Main Streets as indicated in the Downtown 2040 Master Plan and propel our downtown into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Martin, for your comprehensive summary, very succinct, I might say. As you probably know, former City Manager Kim Payne knows, Marjette Upsher knows, there's nobody on this City Council that has been a more zealous advocate for downtown development than I. I took the lead in convincing Council to adopt plans for the Virginia Hotel, for expeditious completion of the Lower Bluff Walk, and for commitment to support the Academy Center of the Arts. I do have, I don't doubt the presence of two-way traffic on Main and Church Streets. Certainly, it makes sense at some point, at some time, under some circumstances, but the October 22nd meeting wherein we discussed how the pilot program had evolved and where it was, I think Mr. Melwitz acknowledged at that time that there had not been a completely successful completion of the issues surrounding loading zones. Certainly, he said, and I think we all agree, substantial of the words, "Where dramatic progress has been made," but he also said in that meeting that there is still unloading going on in lanes of traffic. Delivery trucks are parking in traffic lanes, and after construction is complete, we can get to a point where we can legitimately decide whether or not the loading zones actually worked. So in October, there was qualification as to just what had been proved from the pilot program, and I will point out, during the pilot program, 10th Street and 11th Street were completely blocked, and like a balloon, if you squeeze something in one area, it's going to go and fill up another place. And when two cross streets are blocked, that's going to impact the volume of traffic, certainly on Main Street. Likewise, toward the end of the pilot program, construction had already started, not just on the two cross streets, but in some portions of Main Street. Likewise, there were no students in Lynchburg for a substantial portion of the pilot program, and we have a substantial student population which would affect the volume of traffic in downtown Lynchburg. So in spite of all the good intentions and dealing with the realities of downtown at the time, and the value of having that pilot program, which I had advocated, I don't think it gave us empirical data from which we could draw any clear and complete conclusions. Now, given the fact that that conversation indicated there were still problems with the loading zones on Main Street, I ask, "What's happened since October 2019?" Because certainly, Main Street has been turned into a four-block construction site. There's virtually no traffic on Main Street. So since then, we haven't had an ability to evaluate how successful loading zones are since then, because there virtually have been no deliveries in any lane of travel. The only thing happening probably on Main Street is deliveries are being made, but there's no other travel going on except for construction trucks and equipment and occasional vehicle trying to get to a Midtown parking lot, or the Bank of the James parking lot, or the SunTrust parking lot. Additionally, you've got to look at what else has happened in the last five months. Eight businesses have closed on Main Street. Not all of them because of construction, not all of them because of loading zone issues, but two banks have closed their doors. That certainly has reduced the volume of traffic. Main Street Eater is closed, Celebration Bridle is closed, High Peak Sportswear is closed, Taliethers is closed, Farmer Seed &amp; Supply is closed, McCarr's Furniture is closed. Now, when you have that many businesses closing in that period of time, and more than that have closed in the past year, with Schule's closing, I don't think we have an environment to accurately measure just how successful the loading zone pilot program was in a very small window of observation. I am in favor of two-way traffic, and I think Church Street is ready for two-way traffic, because it doesn't have the issues that Main Street does, but I don't think we should trade for the merchants and the visitors and the citizens of Lynchburg, the difficulties and hardships they have encountered during the construction, to just replace them with the difficulties and inconveniences and unknown dilemmas that will be presented with a two-way traffic system that hasn't yet been tested as to whether we have the formula that will resolve the issues we saw before the pilot program was implemented. Now, I do agree that it makes sense to install the infrastructure for two-way traffic as a part and a component of the completion of the construction on Main Street in downtown. You don't want to come back sometime later and tear it up to put in traffic light poles and infrastructure that will enable two-way traffic to move forward, but I'm of a mindset that although we can authorize the creation of the infrastructure as part of the construction project, we should not turn the switch and have Main Street convert to an actual two-way system unless and until we know we have mastered the loading zone issues that we know existed even a year ago, this past spring. And for that reason, I would want the resolution that is presented in the materials for City Council to include and express authorization, if the city wants to, to convert Church Street to two-way. It's ready for it, it's been ready for it for a while, and to purchase all of the equipment that's necessary for both streets to go two-way, and to install that equipment as part of the construction project, but not to actually authorize the transformation and implementation of two-way on Main Street until we know we have done what we said we must do last summer before the pilot program. So I do have a draft of a resolution I've shared with some Members of Council, with the City Manager, and that would maybe be my position, but with all of that said, and I apologize for going on and on, do you have anything that can enlighten me as to what's happened since October till today that makes the qualifications that were admitted from the Parking Authority that somehow they went away in the environment that we've just experienced?
Well, that was a lot, but let me, it was good, I mean, but it was a lot. So I think my answer to you about, you know, the empirical data, I'm not sure if there ever be hard, fast empirical data. I mean, if we came back to you and said, "You know, City Council, we're sorry, but there was this one truck driver that decided to stop in the road, and we had to go ticketing. Does that mean it's not successful?" I wouldn't think so, but what I would at least point out to you is that construction on Main Street has proved beyond a shadow of doubt that the trucks do not have to stop in a lane of travel directly in front of the business in order for businesses to get their goods and services, their goods, their deliveries. There's loading zones on 9th, there's permanent loading zones on 10th, there's a permanent loading zone on Commerce, and they're using the elevator, just like the plan said, just like we said they would do, and to my knowledge, there has not been a complaint from any of the businesses about getting their deliveries, and I think it's working well. It has shown that the delivery companies will adapt. So I think we did what was put forth in the original resolution of adopting the 2040 Plan. You know, and I can appreciate going with moving Church Street forward, I really can. Personally, I think that would be a mistake just to do Church Street. I think it's time to move the entire downtown forward. You know, and at some point, it's almost like we keep moving the goalpost. We need to make a decision. You know, we've gone back, we did the pilot program, we've showed that during construction it works, we know the successes, we know what the benefits are. It's time to make the decision and move downtown forward. We know the benefits of two-way. And the other issue, you know, with the resolution, it's written very well, it doesn't say, "Well, how long will we measure these things on Main Street? Is it a year? Is it six months? Is it two years? Is it 10 years? Is it 20?" And during that time, all the benefits that we could have been doing and getting from And during that time, all the benefits that we could have been doing and getting from the conversion of Main, we would have continued to lose. And as you pointed out, you know, the businesses that have left, a vast majority of them had nothing to do with the downtown construction. You know, the banks left because of consolidations and closings, and other businesses left because leases were up. And you mentioned the seed supply store. We've got people right now that are, you know, they want to go in there, they've bought the building, they're talking to us about what they're going to do with that area. You know, people are coming in also, despite construction. They're coming in because we're following the plan, right? We're following the vision. And that's what we're asking you to do this evening, is to let us implement the plan, your vision for downtown.
In response briefly to that, I don't question at all the timing of the pilot program, because construction needed to start in the fall, and the pilot program needed to occur when there was still traffic on Main Street. And it ended at about the same time, the construction. But it was a very artificial and contorted environment in which to test the efficacy of the pilot program when we have no college students, except those who will stick around for the summer. And we had parts of downtown, the two cross streets, major cross streets, in construction. So I don't, I'm an empirical guy. I'd like to see data and facts and proof. And that, to me, would be misleading to draw a conclusion that we've proven that the remedies for deliveries from the street have been shown to be definitively accomplished satisfactorily. I don't want to go to Two Way Street and find, have to say to our downtown merchants and visitors, well, you know, we miscalculated, we're going to have to do things differently. When we turn that switch for two-way, I want it to be the best environment it can be, and I'm not satisfied at this point. Now, if after the construction is completed, we have another pilot program for three months, fine, but let's do it in the fall or the spring, or sometime when there's a realistic, real-world environment that will prove whether it's answered. I look at the five metrics that are set out in the handouts, the first of which is increased storefront occupancy along Main and Church Streets. Well, as I said, we've had eight businesses close up, nine businesses, if you count Schule's, that are gone. Well, to me, closing businesses to get lower traffic count is not going in the right direction. So we don't pass on that first point. Loading zone compliance on Main Street. As I said, how do we know? We haven't had any issues with any other traffic on Main Street, other than perhaps the delivery vehicles. And they're using the loading zones and the Commerce Street elevator out of necessity. They don't have a choice, because there's so much construction going on.
Well, let me see, have you thought about it this way? And you talked about out of necessity, traffic had to go to different places because there was a blockage, right? We know that right now, Main Street has, you know, it has construction going on and traffic's going other places because of the detours, right? Would you agree that a lot of that traffic, if not the majority of it, is going to Commerce?
Yes.
Which is two-way?
And has been for as long as I remember.
And has been for a long time, and it has loading zones that are being used for Commerce and Main Street with no issues, right? To me, that's empirical data. Nobody's blocking the streets on Commerce.
Commerce has a whole lot of parking lots all up and down, and a lot of people don't park on Commerce to go up to Main Street to eat.
I think, well, again, the premise of the plan and what we've shown, the premise of the plan is park once and walk.
Well, that would be ideal.
And we've also shown, you know, when we talked about parking, moving two-hour free parking into the deck, to, you know, to the whole, we don't want to get into paid parking, but that's helping with the businesses on Main Street now that don't, there's no on-street parking.
Well, let me, I'm not going to debate it any longer. I've dominated the last 30 minutes. But at this point, and it's not going to happen next month, next fall, or next year, construction's going to go on for a substantial time longer. But at this point, I have no objection to ordering the materials, and I think that's the point at which we are. We need to make a decision whether or not we're going to expand and authorize the purchase of the equipment needed for two-way. I agree with that completely. Installation of it is important, I agree with that. Go ahead and put it in, because someday we're going to get there, and I hope it's sooner. But I don't want to tonight, with so many unknowns, to say, yes, this is what we're going to do, and then find out we were premature in it. But that's all. I have a resolution that I will submit after everybody else speaks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Higginson, followed by Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I appreciate Councilmember Nelson's, you know, good analysis of looking at traffic over this time, and I agree wholeheartedly that it had nothing to, it wasn't an objective measure, as he pointed out, with the businesses closing and whatnot. You know, but as I take a step back from this, I kind of look at the big picture. And I appreciate all the analysis from, since 2004. And I look back on this, I was there at council in 2004, and read the recommendations for hiring a consultant in 2004, which I voted against. And then another consultant later, which the consultant, if you remember, was one that said, in 24 years of experience, all he's ever done is recommend going from one-way to two-way, never even objectively looked at the other direction. So when we look at this pattern, I've been here through lots of this, and I look at lots of this that we're discussing, you know, kind of as a novelty, kind of as a nicety, going from one-way traffic to two-way, and how neat and cute that would be. And then I look and realize what's on our agenda later today. We're looking at the Fire Department's annual report, looking at a lot of firefighters sitting out here. And when we're spending time and resources on things that are about, you know, little niceties, I remember back a few years ago when council unanimously said no, and staff kept moving the goalpost. I appreciate your analogy of the goalpost. Council unanimously said, no, let's stop here. But then council hired, or staff hired another consultant and kept pushing this issue. You know, with that, because of the fact that we said no, we saved 600,000 bucks. And I know your report's going to show some of the trouble that you have with, I think it's Engine 7 that's in the shop right now, or Engine 3 that's been in the shop for seven months. We were able to buy a brand-new fire truck for Station 6, because of the fact that we said, nah, this is a nicety. Let's focus on necessities. Let's focus on making sure we take care of what's critical, not making traffic go a little bit differently, and especially after Councilmember Nelson just pointed out eloquently that there's really not a lot of data that says, man, this is so great. It's kind of a pig and a poke. I mean, it's a fact of, maybe it would be neat. I look back at this time. I look back at the 2006, I remember when that petition was circulating. All those businesses, the guy that circulated that petition, Oars, been long since gone, sold the business. Lots of this, I look back on the time, and I think it's, lots of it has been staff-driven, I realize, and most of the people, most of the businesses say, if it isn't broke, don't fix it, don't change it. Meanwhile, we've lost lots of businesses downtown. Councilmember Nelson's, I think, recommendation is very valid, when it's not the reality. And I look at the fact of making sure that we fixate on niceties, fixate on the necessities, not the niceties. And so I look at some of these items that you'd mentioned in your presentation, which lots of it requires, I think, a little different look. You know, I can appreciate the fact of the desire of making it so, just because it's stated. But I look at the fact of where business really is in Lynchburg. I mean, have you been towards Road? I mean, have you been where there's two lanes going each way, and there's traffic backed up, because you've got 15,000 students sitting up there? You look at how things are booming, and I can appreciate the fact that you, all the different items that you've mentioned, again, not to pick on it by any means, but just looking at things factually. I don't think you'd have a business that has to get 5 million bucks from our taxpayers just to start, as a hotel did downtown. Or right across the street, the academy that had to get another 1.5 million bucks in another grant. Or the fact that we give a restaurant or a grocery store downtown $250,000, and they don't even last seven months. You know, I look at these things, and I look at facts, and I would love for it to be great, and I would love for it to be, but we can't just state it, and therefore it is. We have to look at the realities, and I think we have better uses of resources. I'm glad things are going well. And I think you used some words that said, oh, you know, some people want it to die. It's not the fact of wanting it to die, it's wanting things to run their own, want things to take care of themselves. You know, a business that is funded by 250,000 bucks to run a grocery store and doesn't last seven months, a grocery store for crying out loud, something that everybody buys food, we all eat three times a day in a grocery store, after doing data that said, oh, we're sure of this, this is a great deal, seven months, closes. It's like, my goodness. And so with that, so excuse my, the fact that I look at the things factually, and I look at this, and I hear these things, and I think, you don't fund grocery stores to that tune, and they close in seven months for crying out loud. So I think Councilmember Nelson is right, looking at the facts, the data that was there when school was out, when lots of these businesses have closed, there's traffic and construction going on down there now. The loading zones were an issue that were brought up back in 2004, when the consultant first came. They're brought up in 2006, they're brought up, I know Councilmember Perro in the minutes, asked about that back in one of the meetings in 2010. There's been discussion about it, because it's, I mean, you're making lots of changes. And let's make changes that are out of need. Let's make sure that there are changes that are going to help. There are things like public safety, like things that are critical, not little, you know, decorative kind of things. And I'm sure lots of people will say this, it'll go great, but I look at the own resolution. The resolution talks about how business will flourish because of more people walking and biking. Maybe. But lots of places, lots of people use cars today. And so for promoting the resolution based on less people being able to drive, and more people being able to walk and bicycle, that's great, but I think the resolution kind of speaks for itself. Lots of these things, I think we, again, need, I'm not going to reiterate, but we need to focus on the necessities, not the niceties, and I won't support this resolution, just like I did since 2004.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I don't think there's anything decorative about a $25 million investment and the saving of hundreds of jobs in this community. I don't think there's anything decorative about that. And that's a fact that Mr. Martin stated, that that investment was made because somebody came to town and saw the investment that this community has made in itself. And I get that some on this dais are just philosophically opposed to, you know, this community investing in itself. Well, I'm not. I'm not. And so I think that, certainly, I'm in favor of two-way traffic, and I respect the comments that Councilmember Nelson shared. I think we're having two conversations about, one, whether we should have two-way traffic, and then, two, whether that is related to loading zones, and whether we should wait for loading zones to sort of iron themselves out before we move forward with two-way traffic. Look, I think the benefits of two-way traffic are well-established, they've been studied extensively, documented, and then they've been shared here by staff in front of various councils now for 20 years. It's a long time. And we have a lot of evidence and data to suggest that this would be a good conversion for Lynchburg. Now, the question is, should loading zones come into play? And I think that we've already taken the most important step, which was to pass ordinances prohibiting trucks from stopping in lanes of traffic when making deliveries. Now that that has been done, and I think that the city can point to very good initial data, that we can work with businesses and delivery companies to make sure that loading zones are useful for them and responsive for them, and that they work, because as Mr. Martin said, no businesses have complained about the loading zone pilot. And I think we've really resolved the big question here, which is, can we make it function for businesses on Main Street? I think we've been able to do that, though, of course, there may be tweaks later on. I'm not suggesting that there won't be tweaks later on, that's part of an iterative process. But I think that we've demonstrated the essential fact, which is that we can make it work here in downtown Lynchburg. So, look, the community's been calling for two-way traffic now for decades. City staff has been recommending it. These are the professionals that we hire and trust, entrust our city to, they have been recommending it. Outside engineers and other consultants have, and I can't believe, we've paid for so many studies, but the studies have suggested that two-way traffic is of value. I think it just, I think this is a no-brainer. I think it's just another tool in our toolbox to drive downtown investment forward. And I think that one of the great things that this community can claim through its city council is that this city council has made a repeated investment in our community over decades, and it's paying off Mr. Martin's side of the fact that downtown land value has gone from 75 million to...
229.
229 million. Now, would that have happened, had we not made these strategic prudent investments? I don't think so. And so I'm proud to vote for two-way, and I'll make the motion that we approve the resolution as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion made to adopt the resolution as presented by staff, and would you have further discussion on that?
Not for me, ma'am.
Councilmember Wilder.
I support the motion, because, again, we have discussed this on several times, even before I got on city council, it was already discussed. When I got on city council, I thought it was already had been decided upon, because I asked prior to getting on, had that decision been made, and I thought it had been, so I was a little taken back when it had not been finalized, and we discussed it again. We studied the loading zones for about six months, I thought that was an adequate amount of time. We've talked to, we do need to order the signs for the process in order that the leeway needed to do so. I think we need to continue to move forward with that, so we can give you adequate time to get all the signs that are needed. We have done so much, we've talked with the businesses in our local community, we talked in PDC Committee, about them continually talking to businesses about concerns, about the traffic, about two-way traffic, so to be continuing to talk to our businesses and getting their feedback over several months. And again, a major point as well, we went from 75 million dollars to 229 million dollars in value for downtown. It shows that our 2020 Plan, now the 2040 Plan, has been working. If we didn't have that 2020 Plan back then, we might not have the investment that we have today. So I'm trusting on that, and continue to go with that. And in the 2020 Plan, I believe, was two-way traffic, as well as in the 2040 Plan. So here we are, 20 years later, still discussing that. So I'd rather go ahead and move forward with that and go to two-way traffic, so we can order the necessary item that we need, and not have to do the same discussion over and over again. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Perro, I'll come to you for any further discussion. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Martin, first off, you and I arrived in Lynchburg about the same time, or I'd returned to Lynchburg, I'm not sure, you were across the river, I guess, but started working in Lynchburg, I guess, in 93. But I arrived shortly thereafter, and was almost immediately involved in, what was it called, it was Downtown Renaissance Program, and multiple other programs to support downtown reinvestment. And, you know, it has been absolutely amazing what we've seen over the past two decades. I mean, it's been transformational, and you're absolutely correct. And I agree with you that economic, that this investment in our infrastructure has paid dividends as far as economic development is concerned. And undisputable, thank you for sharing the story about Flowers Bakery. I think that's, and I've said this before to staff, I didn't realize who all was involved in some of those negotiations, and I'll say it again, thank you for the work that you all did to save the, or to protect the jobs that that important institution brings to Lynchburg, and the tradition it's brought to Lynchburg. So thank you for all your work there.
Team effort.
I'm sure it was. And I don't, like I said, I didn't know you were involved in it previously, and I'm sure many, many people were involved in it. All right. We just heard some things. I think, Mr. Wright, I think that was a gross mischaracterization about members... about members of council not being willing to invest in Lynchburg, as I just demonstrated with Mr. Wright, and we've been investing in, in downtown, in infrastructure downtown for decades now. Um, I also think it was a gross mischaracterization about what citizens want. I think clearly it's divided. It's divided. I get stopped, people saying yes, that they want it, other people say absolutely no, that they don't want it. It's a, it's not clear one way or the other. Um, two-way traffic's not an investment, in my opinion. It's, it's, it's really a, a means to an end. Um, the question is, how do you perceive that end, and, and what end is it that you're looking for? Yes, the consultants tell us that, uh, they think it's, it's a, a good plan. Um, you know, as a consultant myself, you know, you have to listen to what's said, analyze it, and you don't always take it at face value. Um, you have to understand the, the metrics, what's behind the decision, and the history of the decision. I think Mr. Hegelson brought up, uh, that's a, that's a troubling point. If you've never done it any other way, how can you compare it to something else? So I look at my personal experience, I'm with Mr. Nelson, I believe in empirical data and looking around, and, uh, I think one of the best examples of the area of a thriving downtown is Lexington, Virginia. Um, and that has one-way traffic on opposing streets, and I really think it works well for the city of Lynchburg. Commerce Street, you're right, Mr. Martin, Commerce Street is deflecting, is taking a lot of traffic, but the cross-section of Commerce Street is greater than the cross-street from either Main or Church. Uh, you have just more room there to maneuver. One of the most, um, anxiety-inducing moments for a driver is trying to parallel park on a tight, on a tight two-way road, or, or a tight two-way street. Um, can you, you, I see, see it on Commerce Street, it's not that busy, there's only parking on one side, and you get somebody behind you, and they, they just kinda lock up when they're trying to park. Um, but you can maneuver around a lot of cases. If we're seeing the type of increased traffic that we'd like, that's gonna become, uh, a significant stressor, and I think that's gonna be challenging for businesses. I, I'm a good parallel parking guy, but even I get stressed out sometimes. I've got three people behind me, and somebody starts honking the horn, and wondering why I can't get into a parking spot. Um, since we discussed this earlier, you've added the metrics, I'd like to talk specifically about the metrics. Um, uh, the increased value of property along Main Church Street, and, and I, I think these are, are good points. I'd like to know a little bit more about them, I'll ask the questions, and, and then, if you wouldn't mind coming back and helping, helping explain, explain them. So, where, where do we, what's the control group for each of these? So the, so we're looking for increased assessed value of property along Main and Church Street. Is that effective, uh, close to business 2018, end of the year 2018, end of the year 2019? Where are we gonna measure that? How are we gonna measure that point? Um, and same with increased storefront occupancy. Loading zone compliance, uh, I think you're right, you're never gonna really get that, that's gonna be a very hard or difficult, uh, difficult measurement to take. Increased traffic volume along Main and Church Streets, that one's very interesting. Um, again, what's the control on that? What, how are you gonna, how are you gonna decide if you've got increased traffic volume or not? Uh, and where do the boundaries for that, for that matter, where are the boundaries of the property, of the property assessed value, and the storefront occupancy? And then decreased traffic crashes along Main and Church Street. I wasn't that willing, wasn't that aware that we're having many previously, so where do we, what's, what's the metric for that? And I'll stop there and let you answer, answer those questions.
Okay, that, they're very valid, uh, points, and I, I would think that the boundary obviously would be between 12th and 5th on Church and Main, all right, because that's what we were looking at doing. Um, in, in terms of assessment, I think we would look at it, um, I, I think you would obviously have to look at it prior to the end of the project, which would be July 4th, which would be the start of a new fiscal year, so you're gonna have to have a, a cutoff point, and then moving forward. So you gotta have a control, like you said. Um, in terms of storefront occupancy, again, uh, that's gonna be a little difficult, um, but I, I think we know what storefronts are vacant right now, because downtown Lynchburg has done a wonderful job going out and surveying, uh, everywhere downtown, actually. They've got an app, I actually went out and helped them do it one time, it was kinda fun. Um, so we know where they are. I, I think it's just a matter of being able to, to build upon that. Um, in, in terms of, of traffic counts, I would think that we would have to go back pre-construction, uh, in the same way with, uh, traffic crashes. Uh, there are, there's, there's not as many traffic crashes, uh, you know, being out, down here every day, I, I obviously haven't seen the data, quite a few happen at the intersection of Ninth and Church, or at least they used to. Um, so I think we would have to look at, at that data pre-construction also, to move forward.
Do you have the traffic count data?
Um, yes.
Okay. All right, so that, that, one, that data exists, so that's good. I thought there probably was, I remember seeing a, I remember seeing, uh, a demonstration of it. Okay.
I think, I think traffic volumes, I, I mean, we have all the data, it's just a matter of picking what the control is going to be.
So, one of my sticking points of this has been, because it seems to me that the will of council wants to move this forward, and I know that's waffled over the past couple of years, but if, if we do this, then it needs to be reversible, because if we determine that it does not work, then we need to be able to go back to, to, almost the way it was, I'll put the caveat, the way it was. Um, so, when do, if, so if we see a decrease in traffic, traffic volume, if we see a, let's say, a growth in assessed value of less than, less than average across the city, if we see a decrease in storefront occupancy, then is that going to indicate, uh, that, that this experiment's failed? And how much time do we give it?
Well, exactly. Is it a year, just kinda back to, uh, the point with Councilman Nelson? Is it a year, is it two years, is it 10? Uh, I would suggest, once we look at the data on an annual basis, we would know if it wasn't working. We don't think that's going to be the case, obviously, or we wouldn't have been recommending it for so long. Um, but, but yeah, I think we're, it, it's gonna be difficult to ascertain, but I think we will be able to show, over the course of years, that, um, these things are actually happening. And I, I think you will see an increase in the storefront occupancies and the amount of people downtown, uh, and, and also, you know, just storefronts that aren't empty anymore. Um, so yeah, far, to your point about being able to reverse it, uh, the city engineer put some, uh, cost estimates together for that, uh, that was in the agenda summary, and that would be a matter of taking some signals down and, uh, turning signs around, is my understanding.
Um, so, to me, what, what seems logical would be to have all the numbered streets to be two-way, and Main and Church to remain one-way, and I, I do believe that there'd be significant benefit to, to make from 12th Street to the expressway or beyond on Church Street two-way, uh, just like it is on, just like it is on Main Street. Uh, that's a, I think that, that block would certainly benefit from, from two-way traffic. Um, well, so we'll see, we'll see how this, how this moves along. I've got, I just have a lot of concerns, but I, but my primary concern is now that if we're gonna implement it, and feels like we are, then we make sure that we do it in a, in a correct way, with a manner that we can review our progress, see how we done, how we've done, and make informed decisions going forward. Thanks.
Fully understand. It's a difficult decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Perro. Vice Mayor Dolan?
Yes, uh, I, I really don't have much to add to everything that's been said, except I was reading in Speck's book of, I think, a 2018 book, and when Wackable City Rules was the name of the book, and he lists 78 cities that have gone from one-way to two-way, and none of them have reverted back, and they've been very successful, and he cites that. It's, it's so much better for traffic, the police are happy with it because speeding is down, there's less accidents, more options to redirect traffic when they need to be, businesses are happier with it. So, you know, he just documents that this has been successful in the past, and I don't understand why a city of our size cannot do this and make things work. So I would definitely support, uh, doing the two-way at this point in time. Uh, from what I've read in the past, I think that it would really benefit the city. And we're, we're talking about in both resolutions, and spending the money anyway, which is already in the 2020 budget, I believe, so it's not, the only thing we're talking about in, um, Councilmember Nelson's resolution is kicking the can down the road for a while, with Main Street, and truthfully, I don't think we wanna revisit this every few months, and 20 years we're talking about it, right?
Thank you. Um, I think everyone has, has said words, and so I'd like to interject a few things. Um, I, you know, I am in support of Councilmember Wright's adoption of the resolution as stated by staff. Uh, we have been studying this, researching this, consulting this, getting various information. We've asked, uh, city staff to put it on hold, we have construction going, um, and, and you know, one thing, I, I look at, I, I respect all council members, and I respect those that have been here when original, uh, plans were put in place as far as, uh, the downtown in, in 2004, but, you know, if, if, I think if we went by the vote that was put in then, we would have lost out on the investment dollars we've received, uh, the difference between 75 million and 229 million. So I kinda wonder, what is the impetus for driving that you wanna vote against something that's clearly an investment for the benefit of the city, and has clearly proven to be successful? And so, why we still question that is amazing to me. But then, I don't think that the decisions I make are just nicety decisions, and decorative decisions. Um, and that's specific, because Councilmember Hegelson just called it decorative and nicety, not when there's the investment dollars on the line that private investors put into the downtown in our area. And when people only give half of the information, which I don't like that either, I think you're misleading the community, you're misrepresenting, uh, what is happening downtown. Some businesses that closed because people retired. It was not because of traffic. Some closed because it was the function of the banks and their downsizing. Some businesses have closed because they just weren't making it. Uh, you know, I mean, there are varied reasons that we all could give to why some of the businesses, and very factual reasons as to why businesses have not, um, either been successful or chosen to close. And when we talk about all of the businesses that you're stating have closed, no one mentions the ones that have opened. Opened since the traffic, uh, has been interrupted, opened since construction started. I have one, two, three, four, five businesses, Rolled Cold Creamery, Anointed Hands Beauty Salon, Stony Badger on Main, Gentleman Johns, First National of Alta Vista, who have businesses that have opened in the past year, at least. Maybe give them a few more months over a year. So I think we should not just give half of the information to make our arguments, give it all. Let the community decide, let people weigh in, but give them all the information. We have some who are coming on, leases signed, three businesses that will open on Main Street. We have researched, we have proven, we have piloted, and so to keep kicking the can down the road, sometimes you just gotta make the decision or get off the pot. And I'm not sure what, again, is the impetus for people not wanting to invest in any part of the city, if it proves lucrative coming back. So I will be voting in support of the resolution. I will ask if there are any further comments, um, and then I will be calling for a vote. Thank you, Councilmember Hegelson.
You know, when I look at this, the expert's opinion, the expert consultant, I was there when the, the first consultant came, as I mentioned, and the first consultant that we paid, he said, what kind of message does it send when a city has a sign up that says, "Do not enter"? That was the expert consultant's report. Remember that, it was yesterday. It's been tw- almost 15, a long time ago. I was scratching my head thinking, a traffic sign is not a bearing of welcome to Lynchburg or not. That was an expert consultant that we heard from first. Do not enter means, don't come to Lynchburg. He said, he, he talked about the story about a guy from driving in up on 29, and the first thing he sees is, "Do not enter." Said, what are you gonna, go back home to Florida? And, and it was, it was quite comical. The second professional consultant that we just had was the consultant that, when push came to shove, and I asked him a simple question. Consultants give opinions. We've heard lots of different opinions up here, and I know staff has wanted this to happen, but, as, as Councilmember Perro said, lots of businesses said, were against it, some, as you said, Madam Mayor, to be fair, some of them said they're for it. Um, obviously, there's two sides to everything. And, and so with that, the consultant that has been doing this for 24 years, that supposedly was hired and requested and, and, uh, under the procurement laws, I don't know if there was an open bidding process, or usually not with procurement, you can hire who you want. So you hired a guy that had 24 years of experience, when asked, have you ever recommended going from two-way to one-way, he said, nope, never. Never one time recommended that. And, and so I'm sitting there as somebody that looks at things objectively, and like to look at empirical data. I like to not just be sold a bill of goods, I don't like to just say, oh, this is great, or this is bad, but actually look at facts. And, and when you get a consultant, you kinda want somebody that's gonna give you objective data, and say, here's the pluses and minuses. There were no minuses to it, it was all pluses. It's all the fact that how, if we spend this money and, and convert, uh, traffic from one-way to two-way, it's gonna be just a boom, and it's gonna be fabulous. And, and the reality of it is, I don't think that's the case. And, and so, again, the fact of saying, changing traffic flow, I think that's a nicety. I think we, we need to focus on necessities. I think we have something that is working well in areas that we have problems with roads, we need to fix those roads, we need to fix problems with bridges, we need to focus on making sure we have good public safety, we need to make sure we're fixating and focusing our money on things that are necessary. Now, is this gonna be some magical boom that just says, oh wow, we changed traffic flow from two-way to one-way, or one-way to two-way, and now it's gonna just be some miracle, miracle drug, like a snake oil salesman would sell in the old west? Is it something that's actually gonna work? You know, hey, there may be some good positive things from it. I totally can understand that. And, and just because I say that I think this is not a good use of public resources, doesn't mean that I'm not for any infrastructure. Infrastructure is critical for our city, and, and I think we need to make sure we do correct infrastructure. Not long ago, we had 6 million bucks that was gonna go into a roundabout behind Virginia Baptist Hospital. Wisely, we said, hey, that isn't good. We got real problems out on 501 and, and 221. Let's divert that 6 million bucks to a place where it has real utility, it has real traffic jams. Let's push it and focus it there, and we are, and I'm glad that we are. I'm glad the, the state has allowed us to make a, a change, and we transferred that, those funds, to actually fix something that is, actual has utility. I look back on this one now, again, I realize it's, uh, low money, 572,000, but last time we did this, we were able to buy a brand-new fire truck, um, that was very well-needed at Station 6. So, again, I, it isn't a matter of, 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 you know, name-calling, or, or saying we hate this or hate that, it's a matter of priorities, and I, I just, just don't think this is a good priority, and I won't be supporting it.
Councilmember Nelson, thank you. Councilmember Hegelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since I stopped speaking about 30 minutes ago, I'm somewhat amazed at the distortions that have been assigned of the arguments and points that I made. I am certainly not kicking any can down the road. I'm trying to base a decision on facts, not opinion and speculation. Um, that happens to be a trait of my profession. I am not against two-way traffic. I am very much in favor of two-way traffic, at the right time, at the right place, and under the right circumstances. Our resolution, a resolution I think I'm, I initiated, uh, when this first came up, said that we need to have the effective designation use and enforcement of timed and permanent loading zones in a normal, realistic system. I think we have loading zones, but I'm, haven't been convinced they're I think we have loading zones, but I haven't been convinced they're effectively timed, designated or used. And our pilot program did not, as I said, have an opportunity to measure that. Now, I do not want it to be said that I'm voting against two-way traffic, but I do not favor the resolution as it now stands. And for that reason, I would like to make amended motion and have my motion, my resolution either die today and that would leave me with the opportunity to support the other, maybe. But I do make a motion that we pass a resolution that says, "Whereas properly implemented two-way traffic conversion will promote the further development of downtown businesses by increasing exposure and enhancing the pedestrian and bicycling experience. Whereas properly implemented two-way traffic will strengthen the vibrancy of downtown Lynchburg as a destination for residents and visitors alike to enjoy the culture, recreation and history of downtown, of a downtown environment. Whereas two-way traffic studies of that conversion allow speed to be reduced and adequate road capacity to be maintained on Church Street. Whereas Lynch's Landing Foundation renamed Downtown Lynchburg Association on April 25, 2017, Lynchburg's downtown advocacy organization approved a resolution on March 9, 2017 in support of two-way traffic on Main Street. Whereas the practices undertaken and progress achieved during the loading zone pilot program indicates an effective designation, use and enforcement of timed and permanent loading zones for deliveries on Church Street. And whereas the practices undertaken during those loading zone pilot program indicate some progress has been made in the effective designation, use and enforcement of timed and permanent loading zones for delivery, for deliveries, excuse me, on Main Street. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lynchburg City Council hereby supports the conversion of Church Street to a two-way traffic pattern as currently designed and planned for implementation during the Main Street renewal project. And be it further resolved that the Lynchburg City Council hereby approves constructing and implementing the designs, infrastructure and plans necessary for an eventual implementation of two-way traffic on Main Street as designed and planned for implementation during the Main Street renewal project, but expressly reserves its authorization for the actual conversion to two-way traffic patterns to occur on Main Street until and unless a future city council determines that credible facts clearly demonstrate that timed and permanent loading zones for deliveries on Main Street are effectively designated, used and enforced." And that's my motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Do you accept the amended motion of Councilmember Nelson's?
That's the substitute motion.
The substitute motion, right, yes, okay.
But he needs a second.
Right. Is there a second for the substitute motion?
And that's worth a second.
All right, the second has been made. Any further discussion? All right, please cast your, yes, I'm sorry.
I think we should discuss it, that's why I thought it was a second.
There you go.
All right, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I think there are a lot of really good points in this, the making sure that the implementation is working. You can get the, get the infrastructure in place and ready to go, but not pulling the trigger until, until criteria met. I think that's worthwhile. My concern, though, is from a traffic management standpoint, how would you do Church Street two-way and leave Main Street as one-way? Does that, does that work or would it be better to hold off both Church and Main Street for the same period?
Well, we talked about it. Obviously, staff's thought is that they should be, both be done at the same time. Church Street could be done on its own.
I'm sorry, say that again, you thought it'd be most efficient if they're done at the same time?
We believe they should be done now, absolutely done now. Church Street could be done, we did talk about it today after receiving the substitute motion. And Church Street could work on its own. Yet again, we think that, you know, how long before we go and look at Main Street and what opportunities have we lost on Main Street in waiting? So, yes.
In response to that question, my resolution, my motion does not compel the city to go two-way on Church Street. If the city decides they need to coincide, they can wait on Church Street too. It just authorizes to move forward if it's prudent to do so in the city management and engineering department.
Madam Mayor, I think I jumped ahead of myself. I guess, according to our rules of procedure, as a substitute motion, the debate is whether or not the substitute motion will replace the main motion, but not on the merits of the substitute motion itself. So I'll defer. Until, until the motion's passed, I'll defer.
All right, thank you. We're now making a vote on the substitute motion. Please cast your vote. The substitute motion is to accept Councilmember Nelson's resolution to replace the main motion.
So then you can debate that.
Has everyone pushed in?
I'm lit.
I'm not lit yet.
All right, well, let's take a voice vote.
Wait till we're done.
Thank you.
I got a green.
Okay, let's take a voice vote then.
Is it working?
No, it's working.
No. Okay, I tell you what, let's not worry about it, let's reset it after we take a voice vote.
Maybe we could take the money, the 572,000 and fix this thing. How about another substitute?
All right, thank you. Councilmember, okay, Council, Ms. Craig, we're just going to take a voice vote, so don't worry about it. Thank you, don't worry about it. Councilmember Wright on the substitute motion?
No.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder?
No.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
No.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Perro?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Aye.
And my vote is no. So the substitute motion does not pass. We are now voting on the motion made by Councilmember Wright to adopt the resolution as presented by staff. That is the vote now. Do you want us to try it again? Have you reset it? All right, we will try to vote on the substitute motion to adopt the resolution as presented by staff.
Not the substitute, the main.
I mean, the main motion, I'm sorry, as presented by staff. All right, well, thank you very much. So we will take another voice vote. Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Perro?
No.
Councilmember Hegelson?
No.
And I am voting yes. So the motion passes, five to two. Thank you very much. And to those who work with our board, this board for the community and for the viewing audience and folks in the room, was originally built, I was told. And so there are no replacement parts, there are no, you know, things like that. So it may be that if we continue to have this problem, we may need to invest some funds in a new voting system. Yeah, so, thank you, the motion passes. All right. Next, we will receive the Fire Department's annual report for calendar year 2019. Fire Chief Greg Wormser and Deputy Chief Robert Lipscomb will give us this presentation. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you very much for having us tonight. As you recall, we had come to you last year with our standard to cover and as part of our commitment to transparency, wanted to provide you an annual report and that report has been successfully completed. So we're here tonight to discuss and celebrate some of the great accomplishments of the Fire Department over the past year, understanding that we do have some challenges along the way that we're going to need to address in the very near future. Prior to starting, I do want to make mention that it is the 45th anniversary of two firefighters who lost their lives at the 700 block of Main Street, happened this date 45 years ago during a fire. And so firefighter Stevens and firefighter Stewart are certainly, their families are in our thoughts as we move forward tonight. So in light of not wanting to bore you with a bunch of PowerPoint slides that you often see, we decided to take a different approach and so we've sent you the report, which we will be rolling out to the remainder of our staff who have not seen the report up to this point, later on this week. And just wanted to highlight a few important points and a few important accomplishments as we move forward in the document. So if you turn to page six, you'll notice that we've listed all of our calls for service. So the important point that we wanted to address here is that these are actually the numbers of responses that we go on every day. So although the Department of Emergency Services, otherwise known as LingCom, receives thousands of calls a day for various things that go on in the city, 14,297 of those in 2019 were answered by the Fire Department. It should be pointed out that there are a lot of calls that Department of Emergency Services receives that are not answered by the Fire Department, but may be assigned to the Fire Department. So examples of those calls would be when a sprinkler system is not active or a fire alarm is out of service or maybe there's a street closure due to some construction that's temporary roadwork going on. So there are lots of calls for service at the, or lots of calls that could be assigned to the Fire Department that are not necessarily responses by the Fire Department. So you can see overwhelmingly that we respond to a vast majority of EMS calls in the city to the tune of about 12,144. The important point that we wanted to make here and for you all to understand is that this represents a more than 16% increase in our total call volume over the past three years. And so calls continue to rise as our population continues to grow and our population needs additional services. So I was asked earlier, you know, why does that happen? Like, what are the circumstances that cause those call volumes and those calls and responses to rise? Well, the fact is, it's the growth and it's the type of growth. So we are seeing this across all socioeconomic levels, we're seeing this across all census tracts, across all wards throughout our city, that call volumes continue to rise. So some of the most recent impacts that council has been involved with, just as examples, are some of the new development that's going on in Gravesville Road, the new development going on on Florida Avenue, all certainly very necessary to the overall growth and health and well-being of our city, but certainly impactful to us as a Fire Department and the services that we provide. Also on that page, you'll notice on page six that we had almost $900,000 of structural fire losses over the course of the year. So we use this as a measurement tool, as you all know, as part of our budget presentation to you all. And then our return to circulation rate continues to be at 51%. So that's almost twice the national average. So again, if you're, if you're having a cardiac arrest in the city of Lynchburg, we have certainly an incredibly, incredible amount of talented, well-trained individuals that are highly skilled and frankly can improve your outcome. And so 51% of the time, we can resuscitate you. So we're very thankful for that. If you turn to page, sure, absolutely.
Councilmember Hegelson?
So on the calls, so we've got 14,000 calls, of which some of them, I'm sure, are one medic unit or one fire truck, but if there's lots of, how do you, how do you account for that, just so we're counting equal, you know, so we're not counting, if you had two, you know, which means everybody has to go, you know, so.
Sure. So these are, that's a great question, I appreciate you asking that. So these are actually the responses, but they certainly don't, they don't represent the calls where we might have multiple units at the same response. Without question, you are correct that these responses are single responses, but within these responses, there are certainly a number of calls where there's more than one fire truck there, more than one ambulance there, more than one supervisor there. So that, that is absolutely the case, yes, sir.
And that's the way you have recorded the 16% increase from last year to this year?
So the 16% increase is represented in the number of responses, not the number of units that are on responses. That number would be, you know, certainly, you know, much greater.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a follow-up on that? Thank you, Chief. This is, this is really good data and it's very helpful. What would be even more helpful, and if you have it, if you don't have it, I'd recommend that you start building it over the years. But do you have, I guess, the trend of this information? So do you know for the past five years what the fires in private dwellings were or the fires in, and you have one or more, three or more fires in places of extremely, do you have that data over multiple years?
Absolutely. That's in the, for the past three years, that's in our standard to cover, but we can certainly provide that as part of our annual report as well, moving forward. So it lives in two different places, but we do have that data and we do, we will be publicizing that data.
So in a future date, before we start getting into budget deliberations, would you mind sharing a multi-year trend with us, something beyond three years, so that we can understand, you know, how, how the changes have, what changes have you've had in your service?
Sure, absolutely.
That's a great question. Would be, obviously, in our budget document, we have benchmarks. And so that would be a benchmark that said, "If last year we had, you know, 12,000 calls, this year 14," you know, so you can see at least the total number of calls. And I'm hoping that's in the budget document as far as benchmarks, it should be.
Great questions. So if you move on to page number nine, I just wanted to talk just briefly about our Fire Marshal's Office. They're instrumental in making sure that not only our citizens are safe, which they're certainly our top priority, but followed very closely by our employees who are certainly incredibly valued and cannot be replaced so easily. So the Fire Marshal's Office conducts inspections throughout the city and I'm happy to say that of the inspections that are required by the State Code of Virginia and the statewide fire prevention code, they've inspected 100% of those occupancies. There's certainly some work to be done there and, you know, one of our challenges is making sure that we inspect other properties as well to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to keep both our citizens and our responders safe. If you turn to page 11, so one of the things that I talked a lot about since becoming the Fire Chief is our community engagement. I think it's very important for us to be proactive in our approaches to the health, safety and well-being of our community. And so part of that initiative was making sure that we put ourselves in the right positions to engage with the public in a positive manner outside of just responding to the call. So essentially being much more proactive than we are reactive. One of those things that I wanted to highlight on page 11 is the new CPR initiative that we have. So if you sort of look back at how we have been improving our return to circulation rates and how they're currently at 51%, we saw this as the natural way to progress, to have the citizen not only be a first responder using our PulsePoint app, but also have them actually trained in CPR. So we've been partnering with community planning, I'm sorry, we've been partnering with Parks and Recreation as well as Centra to provide CPR training free to the public through a grant that we received last year in early 2019. On page 12, I just briefly wanted to highlight the fact that as part of our engagement, we've been able to articulate and put our name on 17,230 citizens across the central Virginia area through many of the initiatives and many of the programs where we either visit schools, local businesses, or they come to our eight fire stations in the city where they're always Turn to page 15. One of the other initiatives that I spoke about since becoming the Fire Chief is looking at ways, sure, absolutely.
Would you, this is just a point of personal interest, would you mind going back to page 13 by chance?
Love to.
And I was struck by the different designs of firehouses that you have. Station seven and eight are very similar, but they're all extraordinarily different. Now, I do have a personal favorite, but I like old buildings, I won't disclose which one it is, but that happens to be my favorite one. But is there a specific design or layout that seems to work better? I'm not talking about, believe me, I'm not asking you to claim any favorites on stations, but is there a layout that sent, that is a better template than others based on what we have here or would you say they all need improvement?
I would say, you know, honoring one of our core values, honesty, I would say that they all need improvement, frankly. So I think there's some opportunities there for some improvement. I think that in today's day and time, when fire stations are built, they're certainly built a little bit differently with keeping in mind having folks who are female and male in the same building at the same time. More importantly, the efforts that we are currently undertaking in our department that we'll hit on here in just a few minutes with cancer risk reduction and making sure that our gear is kept out of our living areas, that we don't have carpeting in stations where, you know, things and bacteria and other gross things can sort of fester. So we're currently working with buildings and grounds to, to make some improvements to the stations as part of our continued CIP work that the deputy city manager has implemented. as part of our continued CIP work that the Deputy City Manager has implemented. And we're going to continue to work towards that effort. But certainly nowadays, if we were to build a station, it would be completely different than any of the ones that you see here, with a completely different model.
Is there a prototype that, in the region, that you will like especially? And, you can get that to us now. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'd be kind of curious to, in fact, even look at what kind of station works, why it's good, and then so that I could have a better, maybe all of us could have a better comparison about what makes that station work, whereas we have other stations. I mean, granted, there's some that obviously need a lot of assistance, but maybe one of your newer stations that works but has some deficiencies. And I think it'd just be helpful for us to see what the difference is. Because honestly, if I walked in a fire station, I wouldn't know whether it was laid out well or not for what you all need to use it for. So, just a comment. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
I love that quote.
Going back to page 15, this talks a little bit about our financial resources. And so again, one of the comments that I have made repeatedly is that I want us to be fiscally responsible. I think that's important, and we try to do that in every opportunity. And so, what we represent here is three-quarters of a million dollars worth of grant funding that we've received. That's up from about $250,000 from previous years. So we continue to look for ways to find opportunities to fund some special projects and things that, you know, we just can't fund through normal budgetary means. There's a section about staffing and all of the promotions that went on. And as part of our initiatives in restructuring, we had some retirements as well. And so we honored those folks, and then additionally, we also have in there a comment about all of our recruits. If you turn to page 20, sure.
I can appreciate the promotions and whatnot, but the staffing, you know, when I hear things and I see that lots of folks have left, retired or left. When we have 14 paramedics that have left and only a few being hired to replace, I realize it may be a little more difficult, but, you know, the stations are nice, the equipment is nice, but it's the people. And so what are we doing, making sure we have good morale, making sure that we have the recruits, make sure we have people that are coming in, and so we don't have a problem? You know, when someone leaves, I remember what we went through this several years ago with the Police Department, when somebody leaves, it takes a long time to get them up and running. I imagine a paramedic, it's got to be a lot of years. I mean, it's not just you, you have a little school and then you're ready to go. It probably takes quite a bit of time, a learning curve. So first of all, what's the learning curve, and what are we doing with regarding recruitment and retention and morale?
Try to hit on all of those if I can. I'll probably leave a few of them out. But, so, it takes about two years for somebody to become an EMT, from EMT to paramedic, because it's considered a higher education degree now. Whereas when I went through, many, many years ago, you know, you could do it in about six months and get the training, but now it's much more specialized. So, so some of the things that we're doing in order to grow paramedics is what we like to say, and what we've sort of been talking about around this, around the department, is providing free tuition for employees who want to go receive their paramedic training. They have to sign an agreement saying that they're going to stay with us, and we send them to CBCC. We currently have eight individuals in that program. Additionally, when they graduate, when they start practicing, if you will, as a paramedic, we offer them pay-for-certification. And thanks to, you know, some, some great work that we've done in partnership with the City Manager's Office, so we're going to be upping our ALS pay-for-certification. So, that's pay separate from their salaries that they get for providing the Advanced Life Support Service. So that's coming now, in the next couple of months, and then we'll continue on in the future. And that's something that has not changed, oh, probably since about 19, well, say in about 15 or so years. So one of the other things that we've started to do is not only just hire what we call a traditional recruit academy, but we've been working with human resources to develop a plan and been implementing a plan to hire an experienced provider. So we're out there actively looking for paramedics, and we're offering them a sign-on bonus to come work for us, so they get sort of that, that pay upfront where they wouldn't necessarily have gotten that in the past. So those are some of the, some of the things that we've been working on to make sure that we, you know, do what we can with the monies that were offered to boost those salaries. Now, most of the folks that have left, have left because they went to the private sector. There are very few of our folks that have left in recent years that have left to other jobs. There are a couple, but very few by and large, they've left. The paramedics that have left, or other staff that have left, have left for private sector jobs.
Yeah, I know there's been lots of times where there's overtime, and sometimes mandatory overtime because of short staffing. How's that being addressed? And hopefully that'll be, I guess, in the upcoming budget time. But, how are you addressing that now with the mandatory overtime?
Yeah, so we've certainly had an increase in mandatory overtime in 2019 in particular. That is certainly one of our challenges, and that's because we did have folks that left for the private sector that we just didn't anticipate, we didn't plan for. But we have a recruit academy that's currently in session now. We just graduated a recruit academy. So between those two recruit academies, we'll bring in 15 people. So we have four that are already on the street, and then we'll have another 11 that will graduate in June. Thank you. Absolutely.
Councilmember Wright had a question, I believe.
Thanks for this presentation, Chief. And I know you're not all the way through it, so I won't be too long, but sort of on the staffing question, can you talk about turnover and how it compares for Lynchburg? I know you said some folks left for other, certainly other, other jobs, other, other jobs in the Fire Department realm, but, but, and then some for the private sector, and there's other opportunities. But can you talk about how turnover for Lynchburg compares to other communities?
Lynchburg compares, is right in line, unfortunately, with other communities. So everybody is having the same challenges that we are having. I recently was at the State Fire Chiefs Conference, and one of the huge discussions we had amongst the chiefs of Roanoke, Spotsylvania County, Virginia Beach, City of Richmond, City of Alexandria, all have the same problems. We are having a challenge with recruiting folks and then retaining them in some way. So they're leaving those departments also to go on to bigger and other things. So they're going to bigger departments, they're leaving those departments to go elsewhere, they're leaving those departments to go to private jobs. So it is a problem, it is an industry problem. It's not a Lynchburg problem. It's a problem for everybody. It's hard to find paramedics. We can find usually qualified staff, but it's difficult to find the qualified staff that are already ready to work, and that's where we have the challenges of making sure that we're recruiting folks. Additionally, you know, as I said, retention is a problem everywhere. One of the chiefs was talking in the Richmond area about how several of his members left his department. I won't say what his department name was, but it started with an H and ended with N-Rico. And he said that several of his, several of his members had left to go to other departments in the area. And so that's not uncommon. It is certainly a challenge for us, just like it is in other localities.
I'm sorry to take up a lot of time. You also touched on the size of your recruit classes. Can you talk about, I know that in past, the Fire Department has, has received more, considerably more applications than, say, the Police Department. Does that, does that trend continuing, where you're seeing a lot of applications?
That trend does continue where we see a lot of applications. That does not translate to a qualified candidate, somebody that I want working here, that I'm comfortable with, saying that they are the best person for this job. They are here to protect our community. So we certainly have that challenge. So yes, we continue to get a number of applicants. That is, that trend does continue. However, the list, as we move along in the process, certainly begins to dwindle quite a bit, much more so than it used to. Absolutely.
Do you have hard vacancies?
We don't, we currently do have hard vacancies, although they will be filled when the recruit class graduates. So yes, we, we currently have hard vacancies.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I had a question.
Since we're asking questions, I'll just ask why we're here on recruiting. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. As far as you mentioned, several Fire Departments are having some similar issues. Is our pay similar to the, the ones in our area? Are we pretty much on target with localities like the other counties and things of that nature?
When you look holistically at starting pay and base, base pay, base paramedic pay, I would say with our recent changes and the changes we're going to be making with certification pay, we are not at the bottom any longer. That's where we were. So we're moving up that ladder a little bit, but, but I think we have a lot of work to do there in that regard, to answer your question. So, yes, we are improving, but we do have some work to do. So, some of our partner agencies and neighboring jurisdictions, like Roanoke, you know, we have commensurate starting pays. Our starting pay is about the same. But as they move up in ranks, move up in the department, as their tenure continues in the department, if they don't get promoted, that's where we start falling much farther behind, unfortunately. And so we're working on some initiatives to correct that, but we're going to need some assistance to make that happen.
I would like to understand, as we get through the budget process, just to know how we compare to, like Bedford or Amherst or Campbell County, just so we can kind of say comparison. I know we did with the school board, we would compare our teacher salaries to the other localities, so we can kind of get a feel for where we are and what's kind of currently in our close market, so we can keep a track of that. I think that's always helpful to have. Also, how do you address diversity in the workforce?
That's a great question. So we're very proud of the fact that we are a diverse workforce, and so we take great strides in making sure that we attract a diverse workforce. So that's one of the challenges with looking for just experienced providers, because it's difficult for some people, there are some challenges there, for people to have experience if they're of a particular background. So, we're proud to say that we're about 18%, 18 to 20% of our workforce is female. And then there's about 13% of our workforce that is African-American or identifies as some other race. I would say, not, not being able to certainly look at every department, I would certainly say that we are, in that regard, much better off than some departments, but certainly there again, have some work to do, and we certainly want to try to level that playing field and be as inclusive as possible.
My question always is, does it reflect your community? Looking at what your community demographics are, and does it reflect your community? And if it does not, then asking yourself questions, what can I do so my department reflects my community? I think all of us have to be intentional about what we're doing, and we have to ask questions. In my, looking at my community in war too, you know, when I see certain things, I have to ask myself in certain areas that I see shortcomings or areas can be improved, I have to always ask myself, what can I do to facilitate? What can I do to change the dynamics in my community? So as we, as department leaders, we have to always ask ourselves, how could we be intentional about the demographics of what we have in our force, and what can we do to change that? Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor DeOla.
Yes, I just had a question about, to dovetail on the compensation package. When you're doing these comparisons, are you, are you comparing what the employee has to pay for health insurance and what those benefits are? Or do you throw that in?
That's a great question. We have not done that historically. We just compare, yeah, we just compare their salaries, and so, you know, it's certainly not something, but we can absolutely get that information. That's, that's not a problem at all.
Please continue with your presentation.
Absolutely. So, just want to turn your attention to page 21 for some training news and notes. Just to point out that we do have a workforce that is highly skilled, and we try to provide as much training as possible to our workforce for the best possible dollar. And so, 95% of our folks that asked to go to training went to training. So we were able to grant them that training. And that training is oftentimes not here locally, and so we certainly have to incur costs in order to, to make that happen. But it's important to understand that we do everything we can to make sure that our folks receive the best possible training that money can buy. We certainly want to make the right investment in them. The other thing I wanted to point out about training, and then, and then we're down to the wire here, is, you know, we've initiated a whole new methodology in about how we prepare our folks for promotion and for their future careers. And so part of that initiative starts when we hire somebody. So it's by no mistake or accident that we start a recruit class in January, so that they're on the street before June or by June, and that every two years from there on out, they know where they should be in the system. So they know the kinds of training, the kinds of things that they should be doing in order to prepare themselves for promotion. And so we're currently rolling that process out, so that we have a clear, transparent, consistent way to make sure that our staff get the best possible opportunity for training and for promotion. Finally, you know, Councilmember Perro discussed or asked about some of the ways we build our fire stations, and one of the things I just wanted to highlight on page 24 in the health and safety area is about our community risk, I'm sorry, about our cancer risk reduction efforts. And so we're taking great strides to make sure that we are keeping our firefighters and paramedics healthy and safe by providing them a second set of turnout gear, by providing them decon, so a way to decontaminate themselves prior to leaving the scene, by providing them a way to wash their gear and their clothing at the station. And so, we're proud to say that we recently completed six installations, or two installations to have six gear washers in all of our fire stations, so that they can properly decontaminate their clothing after they've come back from an incident, while having clothing that they can wear if they need to immediately respond. Additionally, one of the other initiatives that's very important to us is the mental health initiative. You know, the, the reality is, we see a lot of bad things every day, frankly. And although we have some very strong individuals that you see here, that's certainly important to us, and so we're taking some initiatives to make sure that we can keep our folks not only physically safe and healthy, but mentally safe and healthy as well. And with that, that's the annual report, which we'll be rolling out to our staff later this week and then to the public in the very near future. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions of our chief? Councilmember Hagelson?
I've asked my questions, but just, I guess, a comment. And I'm delighted to see so many folks that are here today, and thank you all. It's, you know, lots of these things that we talk about, it's really different. You know, I disagree a little bit with Councilmember Wilder. I don't care if you're a female or what color you are, if I'm having a heart attack or the house is burning down, I want you in the house. And I appreciate you all, and thank you for what you're doing. Make sure you keep getting the best, and make sure we can keep the best here. And make sure we continuously appreciate and respect that we get the best here. And so, I'm thankful for them, and I, you know, I realize it's, it's tough when you lose lots of people and you're working mandatory overtime. I mean, I think that's probably an issue that can kind of get on you. And so, I appreciate it, and thank you all for doing what you're doing. So thank you for being here today, too. That's nice.
Councilmember Perro?
Thank you. Kind of a sensitive question for you, and you answer this the best, best way you can. And if, if you, I'd be happy to talk to you offline if you'd like. Right when you took over the department, there were some concerns about, about, let's say, just in the firehouse and, and people being treated fairly and appropriately. Do you have, have you resolved those concerns? How is the morale of the troops compared to when you started two years ago? Or can you address that in any way?
Yes, I think when I came on board two years ago, there were certainly some challenges. We, we obviously continue to have challenges, as does any organization like ours. But if I understand the question correctly, the challenges that were there several years ago certainly seem to have resolved. We certainly provide our folks with some training and some information that would make sure that we're being as inclusive and consistent as possible, you know, making sure that we align with our core values of honesty, integrity, compassion, and trust.
So you feel like you've made good progress?
Feel like we're making progress.
Okay. That's a fair assessment. Thank you.
Hi, Councilmember Wilder.
For, for continuing to put your lives on the line for all of us in our community, we appreciate the work you're doing, even with the One Voice One Community Project, continuing to support those initiatives there and going to our communities. We appreciate that that continues to make a difference. So thank you, thank you for that. And I think in, in life, we, we bring different, as I've mentioned several times, we bring lens to what we do. So in my lens, I look at life from my perspective, from situations that have happened in my life or my family or in my community. So when I ask questions, it's coming from my lens, and I respect everyone's lens on this table. Because we all bring a different perspective, and I respect that, and I appreciate that. But I think for me, I ask questions because in my lens, I have seen situations happen in my community that I'm not comfortable with sometimes. And I'm not saying if a person of this non-color comes to rescue me, I'm going to say you can't do that. I'm just saying that we have to always ask ourselves questions. How can we better our community? How can we be reflective of our community? And what can I do to make sure I am doing my part to make sure my community is reflective of what I want to see my community to be, you know? So I think we always have to ask us those questions. I appreciate the work. I remember when my mother passed, you know, it took the firemen that kept me calm while she passed out of my house, at my parents' house, you know, it was... she passed out of my house, at my parents' house, you know, but I appreciate that. Every time I hear ambulance, I think of that situation, that they kept me calm during that horrible, horrible time of my life. So I always appreciate the work you do for our community, you, the fire, the sheriff. I appreciate that so greatly for what you do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Arms, I have a couple of questions. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you to our firefighters, our EMS. Thank you to those who are in council chambers with us this evening. We do appreciate your work. And I want to first say that council, all of Lynchburg City Council, is supportive of public safety. Fire Department, EMS, our police, we are supportive of public safety. So my first question is, do you meet with your firefighters?
Yes.
For meetings and discussion?
Absolutely.
Second, do you receive input from your firefighters?
Yes.
Around budget season? Do you meet with them and do you receive input from them?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we just, last month, talked to every member of the fire department at Station Six to roll out what we will be asking for as part of our budget.
So when you began to formulate your budget, your requests put through by the city manager and that end up with council, you have vetted, or at least received information from all of your firefighters? In some way, they're able to give you that information, and knowing what you know as the chief and how you are able to present it, you present to council. So will you present to council the needs of your department?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, would you ever, and this is nothing against you, I'm just asking the question, would you hold back information from council of suggestions or needs that your firefighters present to you?
No, ma'am, not that I'm aware of. I can't certainly speak in perpetuity that every situation would be that way, but certainly no, you know, not that I, I can't think of a situation where I would not share that information with you all.
And based on your role as the head chief fire department director of our Fire and Safety Services, you present the best budget and the needs of your firefighters. And I say that because I know there are varying opinions about what the needs may be, and so someone has to assess that based on meeting with everyone and getting that. You have several associations in the fire department, do you or do you not?
Yes.
Okay, and I know there are two. Can you, can you provide the community with the names of those associations?
So it's the Firefighters Local 1146, so that's the International Association of Firefighters Local Chapter, and then there's also the Progressive Firefighters Association as well.
Okay, I just want to make sure that everyone understood there are two firefighter associations within our community, so. And all firefighters can join one or the other or both? It's voluntarily what they?
We have firefighters that are in both associations. Absolutely.
Okay. All right, and sometimes may they have differing perspectives of what you as a chief may present to council? Have you ever incurred that, or do you know that that happens within a city or locality that associations may differ sometimes with what the chief presents to council?
But there's certainly always differing opinions, whether that's from a private group, private entity, or a private citizen even. But, you know, it is my job to make sure that we provide a fiscally responsible way for our citizens to be healthy and have a positive outcome. And so, you know, we take great pride in the fact that we meet with our staff and make sure that we understand the circumstances to the best of our ability. So, you know, while we won't always agree, certainly, because I don't always agree with every citizen, I don't always agree with every department head in the city, we certainly work, try to work as best we can collaboratively to make sure that we provide the best service to our citizens.
Thank you. And I just wanted you to know, as mayor, and I'm sure I speak for council, that we are all supportive of public safety of your department and your leadership, and so we appreciate that, and thank you. And I look forward to those recommendations that you will bring to council, so that we can make deliberation and decide on what you give us.
Sure. Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further? All right. Thank you. Councilmember Hagelsohn.
Just one quick one back to your report. One thing may be helpful, you know, I have heard over the last year, especially when you said you had 14 paramedics that have left, there have been times when some of those 14,000 calls may have been really delayed. And so that would probably be helpful. I know you, in the presentation for the budget, you're asking for another medic unit, and if there have been times like that, where there, there's not cover, for example, or if it's, you know, somebody's having a heart attack and you expect somebody to be there within a few minutes, but they're out on other calls, those kind of things. So of those 14,000 calls, were there others that, you know, had, had a little bit of the delay, a little bit longer than we'd like? So that may be helpful in the budget. You don't have to answer that now, but that would be.
Absolutely. Unless you'd know that off the top of your head. I'd certainly be providing that information to you.
Yeah.
If I could follow up, because I believe you did present that the last time. It may have been last year's data, but weren't we within the standard of service for our response times?
So when we, if you're talking about our performance measures, we were within the standard. However, that standard continues to get
Narrow.
Very, very narrow, and we are certainly having some challenges with making sure that we maintain that standard. And we're certainly going to be asking and discussing with council and, and staff the needs of the department to make sure that, you know, we get us pointed in the right direction.
That's just one of those data points I remembered from last year.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions? Or, okay, thank you for your presentation very much. All right, thank you. Next is roll call, and I will start, I believe, with Councilmember Nelson this time.
Thank you. No, no items.
Thank you. Councilmember Perro.
It's Fat Tuesday. I'm gonna go up to the Mardi Gras dinner at St., St. Paul's Episcopal Church.
Very good.
It has already started, and if anybody would like to go, they're more than welcome to join us.
Wow, that's a, that's a fun church.
We'll even have beer and wine. Episcopal, and sorry.
Councilmember Hagelsohn.
I do have one. We spent a lot of time earlier talking about traffic and slowing down traffic, and I drive on a brand-new road that we had that is beautiful, takes us directly to a 460. That's Oddfellows Road. I realized the traffic, the speed limits have been kind of curtailed to 25 miles an hour. I kind of assumed it was while roundabouts are being built and while construction is being done, but as I go up and down that, I mean, it's, I remember hearing traffic engineers have said, roads should be, are built and the speed limit should be based on what the road is. And as I go on that road, it's mark 25 right now. It's hard to go under 40, 45 miles an hour because it's so wide. You have sidewalks that are the biggest sidewalks I've ever seen on each side, lots of clearing, lots of visibility, pretty big roads, and I realize maybe it's held a little slower for the current timeframe while traffic is being, you know, getting used to the flow. But it, it's pretty wide open, and I realize it's an enterprise area where you got lots of, you know, industrial area, we got some trucks coming in, but you have pretty good fields of clear, of fields of view. So it'd be nice if that was, looked at the speed limit rather than being 25.
It's a very odd road.
Oddfellows Road, so you go from like where 29 is, you get off, you have a roundabout, you go up a little further, there's another roundabout. It's a new area past the post office that goes directly to 460, which is a 65 mile an hour road each way, and it's pretty wide open. There's very, very few people. Yeah. Didn't mean to sell it so hard before, but when I go down that thing and they had a sign flashing 25, and it's like, I sure hope nobody's getting tickets here. I mean, it's, it's pretty wide open, so, anyway, just to.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we had a sort of, we have a new addition to the Lynchburg family, sort of by extension, and that is our clerk of council, Robin Craig, has a, has a new granddaughter, and so the card is with, is with Councilmember Nelson, but we, we have like a little, from the Lynchburg gift shop, we have a, down, down on 12th Street, we have a little onesie for, for the new one, so.
Thank you. That's very kind of you.
Welcome to Kira Rae.
Very good.
Did I do it right? Did I do it right? Anyway, so congratulations, Robin.
Councilwoman Wright, can we, can we vote on?
We can vote on that.
So we can hit the button? Let's see if the button will work.
Congratulations.
Button will work, babe? Sorry. You don't get any accolades.
And that's all, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Wilder.
I'd just like to commend the Voters League for having a march on Saturday. I just, I just enjoy seeing our community citizens being active, stressing the importance of voting. It was, I think, commemoration of the, I think it's actually of Malcolm X, I believe, but just that they're stressing the importance of voting, and that's our voice and our community. So I think it's wonderful. And also to congratulate the One Community, One Voice for the event they had on Sunday at the Miller Park Center, where they recognize children in our community. I mean, there was standing room only, I don't know how many, it's about three, 400 people in the Miller Center? I mean, it was totally packed, and the temperature change is very hot. But this is seeing all the young people and their families being recognized, the kids being recognized, and the families supporting them. I think it's so crucial that we continue to honor our children, let them know how special they are and how much they are appreciated. Thank you for, Mayor, for being our speaker at the event as well.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan.
Only thing I have is that I attended, and Sterling also, and of course, Trenae, the Mayor's Youth Council, and this morning, and I continue to be really impressed with the level of intellect and also the concern that these young people have for our community and as well, as well as exceeding in their academic journey. It's just fantastic.
Thank you, and I, thank you, Vice Mayor Dolan. I have several announcements. One, I want to remind people that the Mayor's Youth Council 5K is March 7, and so we are inviting the community to sign up for that. Let's get fit for Lynchburg, council members. We'd love to see you there, anyone on our boards and commissions, love to see firefighters, police, safety, public, anyone who would like to sign up for the Mayor's Youth 5K. They can go to the city's website to get more information on signing up, lynchburgva.gov. Next, I do want to appreciate the One Voice, One Community. As Councilmember Wilder said, it was a packed house, and thank you, Councilmember Nelson was also there for the event, and the students for throughout Lynchburg City Schools were recognized and throughout the city. They also recognize the oldest African-American resident in the city of Lynchburg, who is Miss Virgin, well, we assume is Miss Virginia Jefferson, and she is 107 years old.
I thought you were not supposed to tell women's ages.
Well, she was very appreciative. She was very appreciative of this, but 107 years old, and she just stopped driving last year. And so, but very, yeah, and so, but she is.
Lucky you made it, yeah.
She is very sharp.
Changing two-way traffic.
Oh, no, very sharp and just, just so fit and spry at the program, and so we just appreciate her. I also have, you know, you mentioned traffic, and I just want to mention that there are a number of infrastructure projects occurring now currently, and Councilmember Hagelsohn, you mentioned the, the route, because I take that, between 460 and 29, so you're correct. I would agree with you. But that also has two roundabouts. And so as much as people don't like, you know, if you look at, I'm just gonna go and say, if you look at social media, people hate roundabouts. They, they just, I don't know why, but I think they need to understand that we don't just make these decisions in the blind, like I think I want to see a nicety or a decorative roundabout in the middle of a road. It's made based on standards. The decisions are made based on infrastructure, on the needs of that particular block and/or roadway and/or the, you know, what the purpose is. And so I just want people in the community to stay tuned, because a lot of intersections that I see mentioned out on the, or several intersections and areas of traffic congestion and accidents that I see mentioned, there may be future plans for handling that. And so just because they don't see something right now doesn't mean that there's not a plan coming forward in the future. So I just wanted to say that. But you mentioned that roadway and the roundabouts that people have a problem with, it, it allows